Commissioner Price, would you do us the honor of the South City Vision Center?
Yes ma'am. South City is a safe, prosperous, and vibrant community where diversity, innovation, and education drive success in a globally competitive society.
Thank you. Roy, are there any adjustments to the agenda?
Yes, Mayor Protem, commissioners, you were provided with a revised agenda that has amendments in red. Top right on the corner of the paper. It was delivered in your packet. Jennifer had already put together the originals, but we were able to get the amended agenda in there. However, we do have one amendment to the amended agenda. And that is to remove under presentation 4.1, Mike Howard will not be able to be here.
Would I give a motion to approve the agenda that was amended?
So move.
On the paper? Would I give a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
All in favor? Do you need it? You sent mail? Is that presentation?
Yes, Mayor Protem, commissioners, tonight we have virtually Chad Cook with Dixon Hughes Goodman. And he will present the final fiscal year 2020 audit. There have been ongoing delays, as you are aware, due to various hurdles, but we have finally been able to make it to the end. So he will provide the presentation and we'll be here to answer any questions. The audit is in the green packet scheduled on, which you have been provided. So Chad, I'll turn it over to you.
Yes, and thank you, Roy. And let me see if I can share my screen. As Roy mentioned, I'll be going through the report to the Board of Commissioners, which should be in the agenda package. So it looks like this. Obviously, we issued the fiscal 20 financial statements. Hopefully, you all have had some time to go through those financial statements in this meeting. We will not cover, you know, the meetings, the financials page by page, obviously. But we do have some required communications that we are required to report to you as the board. And we're also free to answer any questions from the financial statements that you may have.
Chad, can you hold on for one moment? We're trying to bring the sound up in the room.
Hi, Mayo.
Okay.
Is that better?
Chad, can you stop sharing just for one moment, please?
Sure.
Okay, let's drive in.
Okay, can you hear me better now? All right. Okay. So should I start over? I don't know if you guys caught any of what I previously said.
Okay, yeah, go ahead, sorry.
Okay, no problem. Yes, so as I mentioned, we've issued the financial statements for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2020. As part of our audit, we've got some required communications. I mentioned previously, in case you didn't hear me, we're not going to go through the financial statements, which are in your agenda package line by line. We've got required communications that we'll go over, but if you do have any questions about items in the financial statements, obviously feel free to stop at any point and we can cover those as well. Moving down, the first page of our report to the board is just contact information for John Frank, who's the partner on the audit engagement, as well as myself. So if anyone has any questions about anything in the financials or about this presentation that you would like to follow up on after the meeting, there's our contact information there. Moving to page two, communication with those charged with governance. Again, lots, a lot of this language is sort of boilerplate. It's required communications that we have as the auditors to you as the board charged with governance of the entity. The banner headline here is we've audited the financial statements for the town for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2020. And we've issued an unmodified or clean audit opinion dated October 15th, 2021. In addition to the financial statement audit, because of the town's federal and state grant funding, we also completed a compliance audit in accordance with Uniform Guidance, as well as the North Carolina State Single Audit Implementation Act. This year, we had to test compliance for three separate programs. We had HUD Community Development Block Grant Funds that the town received, as well as state aid to the airports from the DOT, as well as the power bill funds from the DOT. We tested compliance with all three of those programs, as well as internal controls over compliance. And as a result of that audit, we also had no findings related to compliance over those programs or internal controls over compliance with those programs. So happy to report that. In addition, you can read through this report regarding some of our responsibilities. It really just lays out what our responsibilities are under both government auditing standards, which is required because of our single audit requirement. So that the fact that we're doing the compliance audit, we've got to do it in accordance with government auditing standards, which are sort of above and beyond the requirements of regular auditing standards in the United States. And then in addition, like we mentioned, we had requirements in accordance with the Uniform Guidance and State Single Audit Implementation Act. Qualitative aspects of accounting practices. This paragraph relates to, you know, should there be any significant impacts of new accounting standards that were updated during the year or changes in the town's policies, accounting policies? This is where we would report those. You may recall, in the last few years, there have been some changes with pension and OPEB standards that we have reported here. For fiscal year ended June 30th, 2020, there were no significant changes. So no GASB pronouncements that were adopted that resulted in restatements and financial statements or anything to that extent. We're also required to disclose that accounting estimates are obviously integral in preparation of financial statements. There are certain assumptions and estimates that are made within financial statements, and should the assumptions underlying those estimates be off, that the financial statements could be significantly off. The three significant estimates that we like to point out that are in Salar City's financial statements, management's estimate for the allowance for doubtful accounts, which is based on historical collection experience, the estimate for depreciable lives of capital assets, which is based on the expected lives of the individual capital assets, and then management's estimate of the liabilities related to the post-retirement benefits and the other post-employment benefits. So the pension plans, as well as the post-employment healthcare plan. Obviously, those, we look at the factors that are underlying to those estimates, and we make sure that they're reasonable and that things are being calculated properly. But again, should some of the assumptions be off, the financial statements could be significantly different from as they're currently presented. For example, in your post-retirement benefits, we've got the pension and OPEB liabilities. Discount rates are used, you know, the size of those liabilities, it's fairly large. And just a 1% swing in the discount rates used by the actuaries in those reports could result in a significant change in the liability that's being presented for the town. Moving down. Difficulties in performing the audit, this is just where, if we were to have any significant difficulties in dealing with management or anything like that that we need to disclose, this is where we would disclose that. Obviously, you all are aware of the delays in the audit, most of which were on our end. We did have pretty significant engagement team turnover, which caused us to get off track quite a bit. Actually, none of the folks that started on the engagement team, other than myself, are still with the firm. So it certainly kind of threw us off, and it got hard to get back on track on the schedule, and we certainly take responsibility for that. Tina and Roy and their team, that they were always, you know, certainly very helpful and very quick to respond to our requests when we got them to them. There were some things that we certainly had to work through, but, you know, nothing related to, you know, difficulty obtaining information for us in our audits. It was really more of a scheduling issue on our end. Corrected and uncorrected misstatements. We are required to disclose any significant audit adjustments that were recorded. So any adjustments to the trial balances as a result of our audit procedures, as well as any uncorrected misstatements, uncorrected misstatements being misstatements we identified that management chose not to record and reflect in the financial statements. I don't believe we have any uncorrected misstatements, but we did have a handful of significant adjustments that we made to various accounts. For the most part, the adjustments relate to capital projects and capital outlays, especially surrounding, you know, grant funds. There's some fairly tricky accounting surrounding timing of grant revenue recognition. And there's a couple of different bases of accounting presented in your financial statements. You've got the budgetary basis and then the full accrual basis, which is reflected in your government-wide financials in exhibit 1 and 2. And just the timing of receipts and when expenditures are incurred under grant programs and things like that can lead to the need to record some fairly significant receivables. So for the most part, it's adjustments to recognize additional receivables and bring more revenue on the books than what had been previously presented in the unadjusted trial balance. So we did have some adjustments there. Disagreements with management, we're required to report if we had any disagreements or if management had consulted with other accountants. So potentially, we, you know, management may say, hey, we don't agree with the conclusion you've reached. We want to get an opinion of someone else. And if that was the case, we would be required to report that. Nothing like that to report. In addition, we obviously rely on certain representations from management as part of our audit. We do include a management representations letter, which is attached to this report, Appendix A. It's something that management signs. So both Tina and Roy signed, sort of taking responsibility for the financial statements and the amounts that are included there. And obviously, we audit the numbers, but at the end of the day, the financial statements are the town's financial statements, and we're providing opinion. And certainly, there are certain inquiries and representations that we rely on in order to come to our opinion. Other matters, this paragraph can be a bit confusing. There is supplementary information in the financial statements, schedules related to those management's discussion and analysis, and then schedules related to the pension liabilities, as well as the OPEB liability. These are required items. So the GASB requires us to include them in the financial statements. And our opinion on the financial statements, or excuse me, our opinion on the supplementary information that is presented is in relation to the financials. So those schedules themselves are not directly audited. Essentially, they are tied back to the information that was used in preparing the financial statements, but we don't provide an opinion on those as part of the basic financial statements. So again, most of the information that's in those schedules, it comes from the actuaries. We prepared that using the schedules that the actuaries provide. And when it comes to the local government employees' retirement system, that's actually provided by the state. So all that information is certainly tied out, and we believe it is true and accurate. We just do not provide an opinion directly on that information. Moving on, we also had a communication of internal control-related matters. So we are required to report as part of our audit if we come across any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses when it comes to the internal controls of our financial reporting. That's something that we are required to communicate because the audit was done in accordance with the Uniform Guidance and Government Auditing Standards. They're also included within the financial statements. So you may see a schedule of findings and question costs within the financial statements. And these are presented within the financial statements themselves. So we did have two items that we consider to be material weaknesses. We touched on it earlier. Because we had material audit adjustments, mostly surrounding the accounts receivable, accounts payable, grant revenue, and capital outlay accounts, we were required to report a material weakness. It's really just if we have material adjustments, we calculate materiality across the various funds. And if we have adjustments that exceed that, we're required to report that as a material weakness. So we did have one related to that. And then in addition, there are certain accounting processes, and you'll have to remember, this is the fiscal 2020 audit. So I believe Tina came on board sort of at the end of fiscal 19. There are certain review processes that we noted are being performed without maybe a proper level of review. We think it's really just a segregation of duties issue. And, you know, management certainly has looked at this, and they've got a corrective action plan, which is also included in the financial statements. I wouldn't be surprised if you saw similar finding in fiscal 21, because this was actually reported in fiscal 19 as well. It's just due to the timing of when it was identified. We have to report on, you know, the entire fiscal year, June 30th, 2020, which includes from July 2019 forward. So it's just really just a repeat finding from the prior year. Again, we've got the management representation letter. But that's pretty much the conclusion of my presentation. Does anyone have any questions about the reports to the board or anything within the financial statements?
Thank you. You want any questions? No, sir. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chad. Appreciate it. Next, we have the redistricting public hearing and the terms of it, Roy.
So Mayor Protem, commissioners, on page 14 of your agenda packet, there is a memo concerning the public hearing for the redistricting. It looks like we do not have anyone signed up tonight. So Mayor Protem, I'll have you to open the public hearing.
The public hearing is now open.
So tonight, virtually, we do have Deborah and Blake with us, who had been here previously and presented the two separate options that we have, which is A and B. They have been on display in the library, in the foyer out here, for the residents to come in, view, and to, tonight, sign up if they had any questions, which we do not have anyone signed up to speak. So what we will need tonight from the board is to see if there is any further discussion on either one, A or B, either one of those options, and find out how the board would like to move forward with the December 6th resolution. So Mayor Protem.
Right. What's the wishes of the board as far as looking at option A or B? Do we need to discuss it further? Do we need to wait?
Well, if I'm looking at it, there's not a significant difference between A or B. As far as I'm concerned, either one would be okay. I don't think there's probably one. If I had to choose, I'd say probably A, since it's about like it was. The B, no difference, because I could resist. We're trying to reject some population growth. And that's a D, so A is based on facts.
And I was similar in looking at both. I thought, especially the boundary between District 5 and District 4, I thought, looked a little bit cleaner in option A. So that was when I was in the press.
Okay, so after we close the public hearing, we will need a consensus on to move forward to December 6th. Is that correct?
Yes, Mayor Protem. What will happen is we will bring back a resolution on the 6th. And based upon the consensus of the board, whether you choose A or B, that option will be noted in the resolution placed on consent agenda. And once it is approved, then will be submitted.
We don't need a motion to write it, we need a consensus?
It, just a consensus tonight. The motion will be in the resolution on December 6th.
Are there any more questions before we close?
Let me just.
We're going to close.
I just wanted to make sure that Blake or Deborah did not have any further comments. Everything's sound.
That all sounds good, Mr. Lynch.
We definitely need to close the public hearing first. Okay, we have to close the public hearing before we do our consensus. Any more questions for me? Public hearing is now closed.
You're getting a consensus that A is probably the option.
So we have the consensus to bring back December 6th for adopting option A. We're going to move on.
All right, Jack, you're up.
Okay, I'd like to open the first legislative public hearing, where the town of Salar City proposes the following text amendments to the ODO. One, send a building set that's firm, or single family dwellings.
All right, thank you, Mayor Protem. Four members on page 17 of your package. The first, three of these text amendments, and I've struggled up into three, since they're separate. We're buying separate files. The first one is related to street setback reduction for certain single-family dwellings. This amendment was first discussed between me and a partner. He's here with us tonight, Mr. Brown. He lives at Elk Lane. That's information in the packets, filed through Elk Lane. Mr. Brown wants to add on to his home. And the addition to his home will not meet current building setbacks in that zoning district. And so I told Mr. Brown that, you know, there's some other, gave some solutions. Pursued this proposal he's got. And it's on the end of his house. And I started getting, started taking a look at the neighborhood a little bit. There's a house or two that are closer to the road on that street than in our lap. And if you're looking at it with me on page 24, thank you, Christopher Hayes. Exactly right. I drew a blue line down that street, down Elk Lane. And you can see, the blue line represents the 30-foot required setback. There's a house at the corner down there, it's 6th and Elk. It's closer. And so we find that routinely across the community, if you look through the rest of the handout, or the item I've shared tonight, there's a lot of these houses on the corner that are a little closer on one corner than the other. So to get to the planning board, we had a discussion. Planning board said, Jack, you're right this up, but we'd like to entertain this as an amendment. So this took a couple of months, right? Me and Mr. Brown talked. With the planning board to come back, got it initiated as written, and then we scheduled the hearing. And so while we're in another, it just started around September, maybe late August or September, our conversation. So we get right into the amendment, looking on page 19 and 20. We did establish one sort of definition, I guess, for the word block. The block is, in the subsections, defined as the extent between two opposing intersecting streets located on the same side of the street. So they help set what we're talking about here. So they have to be on the same side of the street. And then we got a, we set a criteria, so we didn't, the planning board didn't want to open this up to everybody in town, just in these special situations. And this is how it reads. Single-family residential located on a corner lot. The house is less than 1,000 square feet, gross floor area. And they were constructed prior to 1993, as prior to our UDO being adopted. And located on the roadway, there's 50 feet or wider less. And those were the kind of the categories that the planning board recommended. All right. This is the exception. The single-family residential dwelling that is located within the shortest distance to the street roadway of the block shall it now, or shall establish the minimum building setback from the street roadway line for dwellings that meet the requirements listed in subsection F8, which is those ones that are less than 1,000 square feet and so forth. Okay? Under no circumstances shall the minimum building setback from the street roadway be less than 10 feet. So we're never going to go less than 10, even if the house on the corner down on the other end of the block is on the roadway line. This addition to this existing house can only be up to 10 feet. Any questions? Mr. Fager?
F5 on 19, on definition block. Does that, has the extent between two opposing intersecting streets? Is that supposed to be the extent, the right words? Is it supposed to be distance?
Roads proposed in there, but they were, they were intended from this moment to a, or around the corner.
Have you got any opinion on the difference between the extent and distance? It wasn't a measurement. To me, it was the
What is the, what do you mean by the extent between two opposing streets?
So you got a, Elk Lane is a good example. So you've got 6th Avenue on one end and Elk Street on the other. And the extent between two streets is that distance, that area.
The distance between two streets. I mean, I was trying to figure out later on down the road, whether cases come up on this, how extent just seems like it's words just don't quite fit too well.
Jack, was there supposed to be at one time a road that extended to St. Adams? Is that the road you're talking about? Or he lives on the corner, talking to Mr. Brown? Because it looked like it went so far and it could have went behind Jordan Matthews and made a blue.
Yeah, that's not what I'm talking about here. There may be a, some roadway that was planted when that development was created, you know, many years ago. It shows some roadways, but that's not
That's not what you're talking about. Okay, I get no clue. Because it looked like at one time that that road might have been extended, but now it's not.
We have another case come up on this line.
I've got a definition for extent. The area covered by something is what comes up in dictionary.
So you've got the area between two opposing intersecting streets? Area is definitely different than a linear distance. So it kind of depends on what are you trying to, what are you trying to define as a block? But if it's a block, it seems like it'd be a public area, as opposed to a linear distance between two streets. Now, these intersecting streets, we're talking about parallel streets.
The intersection, the block would be where one street intersects. Oh, same side of the street. I'm confused where you may have uh, another, another street, another street that's on the other side, it's still part of that block on your side, so.
Well, the same stuff.
So Elk Lane.
No, it stops, Elk Lane, Elk Lane is from Sixth to uh, Elk, and then it's Elk Street.
Oh, okay, okay.
Or like, or like. Elk Street, and it's the street, it's between Sixth and Elk Lane.
Okay.
Yes, it's.
He uses that lane, yeah.
Okay, so he's like, he's like.
It was Josh Moore's house, he bought from Josh.
Don't hear what's tied up there. They try not to do that at uh, nine oh one address anymore, the same street names. In that river. So, or, extent, I, I, I think um, I'm, I'm okay with changing the language, I, I'm hoping that. I interpreted what, what the question was, uh, what we're trying to define.
Because when you read the definition, we should be able to visualize in our head what. What a block is looking like based on the definition.
I think it's time to change the justice.
Did you distance or area?
Actually, area might be more descriptive, but what, we all understand what we're talking about, it's just the.
Choose a block.
What word captures it the best.
Yeah.
Here's your block, you're some area, and give, give.
Alright, so uh, F five, block is, in this subsection is defined as the area between, rather than extent. Do that.
So you don't mean, unless you're six to ten?
Yeah.
And how far back, so what's the, right now, it's. What's the setback now, what's it gonna be changed to?
It's uh, it's currently um, thirty foot from the right away on uh, Elk Street. And this house is at the corner of um. Sixth and Elk Street. The estimate, it's around ten feet.
So it's currently thirty feet from the center of the right away, or from the edge of the right away?
From the edge of the right way.
Okay, from the edge of the street to the, into the yard, and so this will decrease it to not less than ten?
Yeah, pretty much ten, I believe. Uh, we didn't, we didn't survey that lot, so we have a good feeling it's somewhere around ten feet.
Yeah, in the picture of the current example you have there, again, just based on the estimated eyeball thing. On this particular street right here, the setback, that looks like about, the blue line is thirty, right?
Blue line is thirty.
And the red line is ten.
The red line is the right away.
That's right, what is that?
Uh, that's your street right away down there.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, alright, see.
On the street?
Yeah.
I don't know.
Does it, are the blue and the red lines the distance in plan scale?
Yes.
So.
Yeah.
Essentially, on that street, we'd be changing the setback to, I'd like to see it somewhere between ten and fifteen feet, right?
Yes, that's right.
Only block, that, or just that block, right?
And only the corner lot.
Only the corner?
Yeah, the corner lot, yeah, that was written there. So number eight, it's, single family residential, located on a corner lot, it, it's the only one in the block that's gonna change. Thousand square feet in size, so there, there's no other houses gonna be affected by this, except this one, in this block. Now, this, we take it into another neighborhood, and that's where I provided those other illustrations in the, in the handout or in the packet. Just to show you where this would be impacting another location, not all of them, but uh, each. Area where you have a um, a block. Those corner lots, they have the potential, that one of them has the potential to be close to the street.
But it have to be a house that's thousand square feet or less, constructed prior to ninety-three, and located along the right away. That is fifty feet wide or less, so uh, which is gonna be most of the right aways, are there some that are sixty?
Yeah, you, you have some sixty foot right aways, but I, I would say the majority of our right aways are fifty foot or less in, in town. And you get around sixty-four and Third Street and Second Avenue, all those are more than sixty.
Right, and it's just gonna affect, on this, this example, just to prove, not going all of ones in.
Okay, that's correct. New question? Yeah, the, the plan will try to narrow this down, so, open the door to everybody.
You want to take it on the basis? So, so the green is where. They want to add.
The proposed addition, it's a green. Uh, and, and, and I will say, it's uh, the, in our best measurement, we're not gonna be anywhere close to ten feet. So uh, uh, Mr. Uh, Brown only wanted a few feet, and then crunched it in that thirty foot. It needs to fall twenty extra twenty feet.
Jack, I got a question about something that might be tangentially related, I know. Two places in town. Where houses are somewhat near the corner. And uh, evidently, I'm just, I'm just assuming that traffic has kind of come off the road. It frequently goes into the yard, because there's um, and ones that uh. Roll off of White Oak and not central, but the one. Par, one's parallel to central. And there's a, a wall, a curved wall, it's been built painted red. And then at the corner of Third. And Fur, that gentleman has um. From a call, he's got posts, steel posts in the yard, and they have reflective paint on them, so. The past year, this, not for this house, but for another house, they build close to the ten foot, not right at the ten foot, but close, and then they have some problem with traffic. What's the recourse of the homeowner? At that point. To protect their house from. Cars that may go off the road, going around that curve. Do they put, uh, I'm assuming the tiles would have to be within the right away, or could they be outside the right away?
So um. Yeah, I'll answer, I'll answer, the first answer is gonna be in, outside the right away, on the property. I believe the retaining walls, poles, such, would, would, would not require any permit from us, and they would be allowed to be installed, I think if your retaining wall gets above. Uh, three or four feet, you have to get a building permit once it gets a certain height, but if it's below that, you would, you install those on your property, it'd be a. Nonsubstantial.
Could you put it on, could you put it closer than ten feet in the right away?
So, only on your property is where I was starting with, if you wanna put it in the right away, you're gonna need to get an approach from. Uh, Public Works Director on town streets, and then DOT on state maintenance. I would, I would encourage you to talk to those agencies about encroaching.
But if, if, if the hole was a few feet back, they'd put that wall.
If they're, they're at the right one, they can do that on their own, but not even need a permit for it. As long as it doesn't exceed that high requirement or building permit.
Because these are, these are one of the old corner blocks where people maybe go around the coast.
Uh, planning board recommends the requirement, there's a one sheet, uh, number eighty-three. Yep, somebody gonna have a comment, Mr. Brown?
Uh, Mr. Brown, if you would uh, come and state your name and address for us all, please.
What are these?
State your name and address, for the way.
Jerry Brown, five oh two Elk Lane, here in Solomon.
Just tell us basically what's.
Well, I'm just planning on, just adding on, we got a really small house, and we, we just, we're all copy to, we, we can't turn around in her without. Flaming over something, so we just decided to add on a little bit, just, just to have some movement room, maybe a little computer room, just, you know, so we'll be on top of her, we've been separated for like. Fifteen years, us in two different rooms.
Not separated. You might be separated.
Well, I'm sorry for that, but. But we just been, uh, just the reader, this, this, this corner house was my parents' house, so we inherited it. And the house behind it, we, we did that, we sold it to our daughter, so we, we moved over to that corner. And we just lost a lot of rooms of that house behind us to this house now, and so we decided to see if we could get, get a little bit of, or closet space. Maybe a little media room for, for she, last she worked at home, being the COVID stuff going on. And uh, we're throwing in the same living room, watching the same movies now. She's tired of me in that living room. I'd be like a whole lot of time. No, we're, we're pretty good about it, but I said, you sure wouldn't mind to have two different places to be and work. And had the extra room, especially because we're just like, say, we're just on top of each other, and there is that house, like I said, there's nine hundred fifty square foot, so, it's almost a tiny home.
So, do you have any more questions for Mr. Brown? Anybody have any questions for our public hearing? Because I have to close it, we have to go to the next. Anybody have any more questions? I'm gonna close the public hearing, and Jack, you said we need to turn page fifty-three, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Motion that the Board of Commissioners. Adopt the amendment. With the following. Modification. That under F five. Were extent be changed to the work area. And furthermore, approve the action because it is consistent, or approve the action, uh, the modified action because it is consistent with the adopted LDP. Because LDP recommends amending ordinances as needed to accommodate uses and situations that arise and are not clearly covered by existing ordinances. And also because the LDP recommends amended ordinances as needed to address changes in physical, social, environmental circumstances. And make existing regulations unnecessary out there, or obsolete. Or further, that we approve the proposed amendment as reasonable. Because it modifies the development ordinances to be more user-friendly where possible.
So.
I want paper, uh, any questions? We're gonna go on, right?
Yeah, next one, yes.
Okay, so um, next we're looking at Towne-Sauer City Proposes the following text amendments to the UDO. Uh, considering roofs, flat roofs, walls, pitch roof, roof frontage. You can make, everybody can make the numbers on here, move it aside, so, I need to. You need a special provision for this side. Here is it.
Thank you, Mayor Prochey, again, on page fifty-four, your package staff provided a new uh, the main topic here is roof signs. And, and, and doing that, we identified that we need some new definitions, and that was the list that Mayor Prochey was listing there. Again, uh, Mr. Gibbs is here tonight, he owns Long Mac of Questions, it brought this idea up. He uh, he came to see me, and then made a permanent application, and in our ordinance, it says no roof signs, so it wasn't allowed, he went through several iterations of things he might could try. Took a freestanding sign, took a wall, none of those worked, uh, you know, just uh, various reasons. And um, wanted to pursue this, so, we had a conversation with the planning board, and they recommended approval, and that's where we are today. Um. In your packet, uh, I'm not gonna go through every item, just ones I think is uh, related to exactly what we're talking about, flat roof. Uh, we got a definition for flat roof now, we didn't have that before, uh, it's one that has a slope of three and twelve or less, so it's. Can have a little bit of slope to it, but it's pretty flat, it's pretty close to flat. Um, pitch roof, three or twelve or more, so that's, that's easy, flat versus pitch. Pitch. Three, three and twelve or more, and the slope is three and twelve or more. Um, and then roof frontage is important, uh, we, we already have, I think, uh, uh, building frontage. That we use to determine how much signs you can have, we do the same thing, we use the same uh, terminology for roof signs. It's based on um, if that roof's facing in an area where the public is uh, come, you know, a public street. Um, parking lot, a sidewalk, we count those as qualifying uh, walls, and this instance, we call it qualifying roofs. Roof ridge, run, horizontal line running the link to the roof where the two roofs planes meet, the intersection creates the highest point of the roof, so it's important. Later when we get into the uh, requirements that we're adding, deleting the section that says now roof signs prohibited. Since we're gonna make the opportunity allow, and we cover that on page sixty-one. Uh, roof sign with two categories, one for own pitch, and uh, that basically, and um. Uh, you can have a sign now placed on the roof, and it cannot extend above the roof ridge, so it won't be higher than the uh, tallest point of the house, or the. Building, I say house, a lot, lots of commercial buildings are flat, and I put roofs, it's in a mark, with pitch roofs, um. Roof sign surface area is one square foot per um, linear for the roof frontage, just to find that. And one roof, if, if a roof has roof frontage on more than one qualifying area, in a total sign area permitted on the roof shall be, the sum of signs, surface areas, I want it related to each frontage. Alright, uh, an example would be a, a pitched roof that has a street on its front side and its roof. Or it has a parking lot on its front, and we, they'd be allowed to have roof signs on both sides. Yeah.
And the. A sign on both sides of the roof?
Yes.
If that road.
If they have qualifying frontage, which could be your road, parking area, sidewalk, the public can make its way around that building. Then it's considered qualifying.
So. Public or private street, a common parking area, a public parking area, a public access walkway. Think they often have a roof sign?
Yes.
And. You have a flat roof or pitch roof?
So, that's pitch roof, is what I was sharing with you just then, let's talk about flat roofs. Flat roofs. Are really not gonna change much, is the way we, we put this together, signs that project above the roof sign are prohibited. So you, you're not gonna be able to put it on a flat roof more than a parapet wall, or above the tallest point of the roof. The signs have to be below that one, no sign should be painted or placed on that roof. Signs should not extend above the roof ridge, the parapet wall, the building, the chippers lower. No portion of the wall, marquee, or more projecting sign, shall be permitted to project over the roof line, or parapet wall, so, again. Um, we could have left in the roof signs not allowed section, some of this language, what we said, let's just take it to the same section. And let's talk about the two different types of signs, and uh, really, they don't have a lot changing for flat roofs.
What's a cantilever?
Yeah. What's it, where you go? Example, please.
Yeah, under reading the definition, I'm creating a structural member assembly that is unsupported on one side. Or one end, and is said to be cantilevered, the cantilever parts of the roof are its least stable parts, whether the roof is a truss construction or of the more traditional energy reactors. It's pretty much what you would think, you got uh. A wall, or maybe even a post, and you just got a roof that sticks out and hangs up, that's a cantilevered roof, doesn't have any support on the other side.
So there's.
Some serious uh.
So no signs allowed on a cantilevered roof?
So a cantilevered roof could be a pitched roof, and then it would be like.
So how?
If it's flat, I mean, slope is less than three and one.
So if it's one support on one side, how's it gonna support a sign?
But, but, of course, that gets into um, building permits and, and so forth, what the load of that, or that, that would be through a building permit process.
Cantilevered roof, I think, I think the example would be over here in Max, in that cantilever.
Possibly.
Pitch, it's got some pitch to it.
And it extends off of a, a building enough to.
That's correct, and it could be sloped a little bit, based on how far, wherever the support comes off, because different materials can withstand load. Depending on the length of, the shorter it is, the more load you can take, but like you said, it gets that sort of far as it's supported at the end.
So we're, we're talking basically a, a so, a solid, can, a solid only one, most.
Yeah, yeah, only gonna be a cantilevered roof. So, I think what we normally think of is uh, the accepted uh, extension off of a roof is usually about twenty-four inches to two feet. And probably once you get it beyond two feet and further, you're gonna start calling it a cantilevered roof.
With a cantilevered slope roof. How tall can the sign be?
Can't be above top part, the highest point of that roof.
And for the example that I used, let's say it's Max, that's a tall sign.
The top of the roof is way up here, and that, that. The top of the roof is way up here, and that that little only part.
Just, it's not taller than top part.
That's huge.
Is there a sign of maybe up there?
Certainly, maybe.
I think, I'm just being the devil's advocate, because well, that's the kind of thing you.
What's gonna happen though, that's gonna be, it can be limited to the load that that.
Yeah.
So you couldn't have real high, because the roof load wouldn't support it, that's very engineering.
Right, that's that's a limit, and the order is also about other built-in, uh, limits. One is how wide the roof is, that's a limit. And then the other one that's built in here is that it can't exceed twenty-five percent of the surface area of that roof. That's another maximum, so these signs can't be so big, and it can't be more than twenty-five percent of that roof. You got some, it's building limits.
This isn't gonna affect like signs found on the wall, like wall.
No, so wall signs are all in another category. This is just new for us, because right now we can't put a roof sign up, we're supposed to.
How many, uh, buildings in town would be eligible to have a roof sign?
Well, you've got, um, a a couple of these pitch roof commercial buildings in town. But, uh, I don't know the numbers. I just thought, and also we've got the, uh, Lodge Matt beside, uh, Mount Air Farms. You've got, uh, uh, the the building where the, uh, they did the ice, they're. Propping the.
No, no.
The Chinatown, Chinatown. They have, uh, so there's some buildings, most commercial buildings aren't. That's all I have, Mayor Portman, I think you got one signed up for, uh, for the comment.
I do, um, John Gibson, if you would come forward and state the name and address, please.
Yes, my name, my name is John Gibson, I'm with a tribalistic property manager in Inside Council. I'm the, I'm Greensburg, and we own properties one twenty Chestnut Street, going on toward nineteen, well, twenty years. And, um, we just came to the office to have a largely solid improvement. We discussed with the planning. And, uh, we obviously had an existing sign on the roof for nineteen years. And was getting ready to replace it and realized if we took it off, um, then there was no ordinance for us to put another sign back on. Even though we've had one there for, you know, for so long. So like I said, we may as well increase it, starting with the floor all the way inside walls, all new equipment and things like that, so. Of course, we wanted to finish it off, uh, you know, with roofing and nice sign. And that's when we met with Mr. Meadows to see what type of issue that we had here. What to do with taking a sign down that we've been using for twenty years and, you know, bringing it back, you know, this big building, so. That's why we're here and, uh, I have any questions?
Was the old sign painted on the roof, I thought?
No, sir, it's, uh, not painted on the roof, it's, uh, individual lettering, they're, uh, about four inches tall and.
It sat on the roof, was it flat or up?
Uh, it's screwed into the pitch of the roof. They were eighteen inches tall.
Okay.
And then they were, uh, four inches stuck out from the roof, uh, each of them, you know, individually screwed in there and. Marked in the place of that, they've been there since two thousand two, since we built the building.
It's, uh, it's up one next to the, the old, yeah.
It was a Lodge Matt at one time, also, yeah, that's what I thought. Are, are there any plans for the?
Uh, no, no, but, but, yes, we, we get the church, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Church there if we get.
Oh. Are there any questions, Mr. Gibson? All right, thank you, Mr. Gibson.
How big is the proposed topic?
Uh, the sign we have proposed is two and a half by ten, it's, it's basically only half the size of what we would even be allowed, you know. But it was set right there over the front of the window right there, it's two and a half inches tall, about ten and a half feet long.
Okay.
I believe Mr. Meadows has a picture of it.
Yeah, according to his drawing, it's centered up over the.
Yes, sir, I saw, yeah, you would have the, uh, the remote control, uh, hand street doors there, forty-eight inch doors, so it'll be centered right over the top of that, so. People walking with their big load of clothes, it automatically opens and closes behind them, so they don't rustle with the door and things like that.
And be lighting.
Yeah, yes, sir.
Sounds good, sounds good. Are there any more questions before we go and proceed to close the panel? I just.
Thank you, ma'am.
So any more questions, go close. The panel here is closed, Jack, you would like us to turn to page sixty-nine?
I make the motion that the Board of Commissioners adopt the amendment. For the, the consistent to the adopted land development plan calls, uh. And ordinances as needed to accommodate uses or situations that arise and are not clearly covered by existing. Amend ordinances as needed to address changes in physical, social, or environmental circumstances. That make existing regulations unnecessary, outdated, or obsolete. Approve that you have proposed amendment as reasonably cause. Modify the government ordinances to be more user friendly when possible.
Second.
I want to take a, uh, any questions? All right, Jack. All right, now the town council, city, the process is following text amendments to the U D O. About recreational vehicles, um, uses, define what it is. Tra- or travel trailer, municipal uses, if I can read what it's talking about. So, uh, parking requirements, table spring requirements, land use, class professional tables. So I'm going to turn it over to Jack and then I can, I'm gonna open the public here.
Thank you, Mayor Portman, again, page seventy of your agenda packet, recreational vehicle park is the topic. Uh, property owners stop by and consuming, wanted to propose being a RV park in Solid City. And there's information about that site. After that process started, another property owner can't tell me interested in, uh, doing an RV park. And there's, uh, an airport to that property as well. So the two, just two separate properties, we brought up the idea, ones on Little Creek Church Road, the others on Center Drive.
One's on where?
Uh, Little Creek Church Road.
Okay.
And the others on Center Drive. All right, uh, planning board recommended these amendments as presented this evening. Um, I'm gonna start with, I'm gonna jump into the packet a little bit to give you where this kind of starts. One, RV parks are not listed in our works. So that's creation number one to, uh, even allow this opportunity. Number two is recreational vehicles are allowed in Solid City except as temporary residents, as in the case of an emergency or fire damaged home or something like that. We've got that building for those emergency situations. So those are the first two things that are considered for, uh, moving forward this, if this, if the board so chooses. All right, so, um, let's think, let's think of back, uh, to the beginning of our, uh, ordinance amending. And and start working away through some of the terms. Uh, first on page seventy-three, a defined recreational vehicle, this is a standard. Definition defining most all ordinances. Uh, built on a single chassis, four hundred square feet or less, designed to be self-repair permanently towed. Uh, towable by light new truck, designed primarily not for uses of permanent dwelling. But is temporary living order for recreational camping travel or seasonal use. It's fully licensed and ready for highway use. With the purpose of this ordinance, tiny homes, houses, and park models. That do not meet the items listed above are not considered RVs. And should meet the standards of and be permitted as residential structure. So what that means is, if you don't follow the design of primarily, uh, not permanent dwelling, fully licensed. For, you know, all those various things you gotta meet to be considered an RV. If you're not, then you'd have to be meeting the standards for a stick build or a cycle home. Uh, for the building good. All right, recreational vehicle site, first go, so explanatory, I'm gonna move on. RV park also explanatory, it's, uh, where you place, uh, a number of RVs, uh, as temporarily reported. So, um, we decided to strike the definition common code, so we'll be using, we'll just be using one term, recreational vehicle. Uh, I've already went through what's on page seventy-nine, which is to create opportunity for allowing RVs within an approved RV park. As defined in one thirty-six and regulated in section one fifty-eight. Um, and then brings us to table uses on page eighty. Um, when I proposed this to the planning board, uh, I said recreational vehicle parks, where are we gonna put them? Where would they be allowed and what would be the approval process? Planning board agreed on R M H and highway commercial. And they agreed to allow staff approve these by right. But if the property was zoned, R M H or highway commercial, an RV developer would come in and just get a zoning permit.
So that would be a special condition we.
That was what they recommended. I I gave them options to do by right, special conditions zoning, and they chose that, so I bring that to your attention, that's. Uh, there's many choices in here, that's one I just wanted to bring to your attention up front. As as we walk through this, any questions for me, go?
Um, have we gotten to this, uh, section five here, we haven't gotten there yet?
That'll be next. That'll close us up pretty much, there's a couple things at the end of section five, uh, where we're getting into section one fifty-eight of U D O. That's the real bulk of this, this is where you set the, uh, specific regulations for RV park, you're gonna round. Uh, there are five categories here. The first one is limited to temporarily supported, only not permanent dwelling, this was important to the planning board. Um, they, they wanted to specify and reiterate that they are meant to be temporary. And they did that through, uh, using some language in other ordinances. All RVs placed in RV parks should be fully licensed and ready for highway use. An RV is ready for highway use for it, or if it's on its wheels or jacking system. Is attached to the site only by quick disconnect, hot utilities and security devices, and has no permanently attached structure. So assess the stage there, any action toward removal of wheels in RV except for temporary purposes of repair. Or toward attachment of vehicles or trailers to the ground or standing towards to shove it previously. So if it looks like someone's a little tired, but it's sit there for a while, that's, that's, uh, considered permanent, that's all that. Um, no permanent structure additions shall be attached. Think we're talking about, we've, and some RVs, decks, torches, uh, maybe even a building, uh, you know, some bunch, but. Uh, screening and torches attached to these RVs, so, uh, that's my last. B, uh, C, these are standards we found in other ordinances. There was a range and the developer and the planning board agreed upon these, so this is no, uh, more intense, no, uh. No more density than other, than at least one or two other ordinances we found. So we're in the, what's out there already, you know, without creating any new ground. Um, setting these setbacks, lot sizes, uh, and so forth. Access and drives, same thing, uh, what we did find in most ordinances, which was important, I think, in most. Uh, no RV sites shall have direct access to public road. They, if they leave their site, they're on a private internal drive. And everybody gets on that drive and leaves and then exits out onto public road in one driveway. Rather than every RV having access to the public street. So that, that was something we've seen multiple times. Um, general, uh, no manufactured homes on an RV site. Uh, tents are not allowed in RV park. Uh, there would be some reserved evidence space, did we see this initially? It was a range of, uh, a lot of open space requirements here. Um, E four was a, uh, decision that the planning board made, uh, made. There were a few sites that, uh, there was an on-site manager required. And as a meet between, install a sign in the interest of the party, provides a contact number for their own call park supervisor. Park supervisor shall visit the park at least once a day. So it's not full-time, um, staff or monitored, but, but would have visit once a day. And then one thing they did add that we didn't see a lot of other ordinances, was that water supply and sewage disposal should be provided through public system. Town water and sewer, um, system, most likely is only option. Uh, they have both in, in Solid City, so, um. Any questions before we move on to the?
I got, I got.
This is a fee.
You go ahead.
So no, or supervisor just has to visit once every twenty-four hours? Doesn't have to be on-site?
That was the gift that the planning board chose to go with, I think the developer was.
So they could visit eleven fifty-nine and nine?
Yep.
Um, and we have to extend water and sewage services, but we don't get an increase in that of the law tax. Um, because I'm assuming these RVs are not gonna increase the animal and tax the property.
Utility, and this is in the super limits, both these sites there will be proposed, of course, this could be at any other site, we've got those two examples, um.
Says water and sewage shall be provided.
Yeah, the, if it's a RV, you pay for your residences, you're, just like you need vehicle tax. So, yeah, you're right, bad lawn would be whatever improvements are made to that sign.
So wouldn't be, wouldn't be anything to fix the lens, that worm will go up.
But the road improvements may be the, the driving, it could be some, uh, dawn.
But our, but our cost would go up to extend services, is that, you, would you think so?
I'll wait on the manager to answer that one.
Chris, what do you think?
The Loves Creek property doesn't have sewer, it does have water out that way, it doesn't have sewer to. And the way we normally do it is the property owner has to put the cost of that. Um, but it's gonna be extremely expensive to water out that Loves Creek side.
How does that affect our current capacity saving back on the next site?
That would be the thing, you would have to know exactly at full capacity, how many RVs would be out there before you, and that's what you would say your capacity is.
We're pretty well tapped under our current permit.
I don't feel comfortable adding any like that until.
Chief, no, go ahead. I'm, I'm, I can do.
I'm gonna add on to what you just said. Can you please tell me about, uh, mail delivery and garbage pickup? How, you know, in a thing like that, how is each individual gonna have, there'll be a, a simple drop, what kind of waste picked up?
So that's a commercial property, so it would have to have its own dumpster, they would have to provide a dumpster.
Uh, what about tonight?
Mail, we would, uh, in, in any development where there's, uh, mailing and some sort of work with the post office on that. But, uh, I assume we just set an address. And then if they, uh, wanna have a mailbox, if that's a matter of the post office, I do. That's a good question for the developer, how you would address that.
Chris, you're uncomfortable at this point in time to have a better idea what might be needed for the next site, till we get a permanent increase?
I don't think so, as long as we know what kind of capacities they would need much, maxed out.
Go ahead.
If you would, could you please point out what the differences are between. A current mobile home ordinance and what this ordinance would be? What, tell me what the, I like to know what the difference is on.
Yeah, I looked at, I looked at, um, manufacturing home park licenses, I was coming up with what needs to be addressed, what setbacks, what needs to be established. Uh, obviously, there's more density allowed in this RV park ordinance. Uh, your setbacks and your, uh, lot sizes are much smaller. Uh, the intent for the road would be to meet the current standards of our other roads, I think we wrote that in there. Uh, if you look at access and drives, interior drives should meet the minimum width requirement. So that's the same as what's for mobile homes. Um. Temporary versus permanent. Obviously, um, temporary in the way we defined it, obviously, um. I don't have them side by side, I'd say they're somewhat different in ways and then, um. So.
It's, it's mobile phone ordinance, is that conditional use permit?
It is.
Where you can look at it individually, it's the, and, and takes into account the different areas, the, but not every site is exactly the same. But it is a conditional use where, where some may have to have some things, some others may not, right?
See, a mobile home park, uh, new mobile home park is only allowed in R M H zoning district, you know, park conditions on. And it also requires park, no repeat lieu, because this would not, uh, no, we didn't build that in there.
And this would be permitted by right, not conditional use?
As the planning board recommended. It could be, obviously, adjustments can be made by the town board as we consider moving forward, um, change act to a conditional, many other things.
This might be a question for Lloyd, but maybe a combo Jack Lloyd question. For several years now, it feels like, it must feel as. For several years now, it feels like, it must feel as, as all, feels like we've been addressing low income housing needs, which is obviously important. As we, if we undertake this, this is going to be a high density in an area. Is it going to affect our contract for trash pickup services when that comes back around? Now, Chris indicated it's a dumpster, but would that affect our current relationship with our current vendor? Would that affect our contract?
Yes, when it's. That's correct. Yes.
And Chris.
That is not.
There's water at Waffle Pass, right?
So there is water stops to the property right behind us. So, yeah, and then it comes down off of 421 from the water plant. So there is water on the Loves Creek park.
And sewer?
No sewer.
On?
Sewer stops at Waffle Pass.
So you have to go from there and walk. That's not that far, but.
That's, that would be my recommendation if it gets that far, that they, they have a dump site, you know, and then have a dump. That would be the easiest.
The force, man.
Question. It says temporary. So if we're saying temporary, how long is temporary?
That was, that was something we talked a lot about.
Mail delivery, bounce, permanent.
Yeah. So you can see what we tried to write in for print temporary. The planning board shied away from a specific amount of days. In other ordinances, they give you about those days. 30 days and a 90 day period, 60 days and a 12 month period, you know, just various combinations. One of the reasons why was, and I read this in some research I did as I was looking at it from other communities who were looking into the request for RV parks, was that there are construction workers or workers that go to sites and maybe stay there for 18 months to 24 months or longer, working on a job site. And they'll own a camper and they'll park at a campsite, no stay there in that period of time. And I think talking about the campsite, that idea has come up, that that could happen in solid city to need for long-term lodging for out of towners. And that's why they shied away. So there's, there's probably some kind of happy medium in there. They didn't find it and give it to me to put it in here. They ended up being happy with that. So there is a strong, you know, 30, 60, 90 day limit or what we've got. Maybe there is something in the middle there, looking at that kind of clientele that we're thinking about. Providing service.
I'm trying to picture where.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, that's what I was thinking, so where is, where would it be? Because I know that's a circular area, so where are you going to put it?
Page 91 of your package. You should see center drop right down the middle. You got it? And, and now that you see Creek Beach Drive, so we're getting ways away from Raleigh Street. We're at the very back end. There's a park down at the end that's had several names, the New York Einheiser. There was a Sullivan, another Sullivan Park as well. That's potentially one idea, but that was what we just thought as an idea.
And to expand on what Commissioner Boone said about the timeframe. Sitting there listening to it, thinking about it, if we have an RV park and there's no timeframe on how long you can be there, we essentially have a mini mobile home park.
Yep.
That's, that's what it turns into. Now, I do have a family member that has an RV park in Montclair area. And he's had it for several years. And I understand what's trying to happen. He does have a lot of contractors that come, that come in and stay and work with Duke Energy and different things. But at the same time, there's a permanent person onsite all the time monitoring the situation. And also, a lack of a better term, I reckon he has covenants too that people that want to stay there, they have a certain set of rules or guidelines that they go by. And if they violate those, gotta go somewhere else, that kind of thing. They'll, they'll put up with any standards down there. But it does have some, some long-term thing, but it's more out. It's in a whole rule set, has a lot more landscape, the lots are a lot bigger, a lot of different things. But me personally, what I've heard so far, I have, I have, have problems with not having it intended there. That's a recipe for disaster. Come, you know, you're not coming back for 24 hours, ain't no telling what's going to come. And the other thing is I have a problem with it being a mini mobile home park. That I have a problem with, and I don't think it should be permitted by right. At the very least, very least, it should be.
Conditional use?
Yeah, conditional use, that's what I'm saying. Very least, it should be conditional use, because I think there, there could be some situations that it may, may be the property is owned right, but the use of it for that is not getting into where it was going to go. So I have, I have problems with those two things.
Well, would you like to send it back to the planning board and let me direct him the type of issues that you're having? And then let Jack bring it back to us, because we could sit here and debate it all night. So if we just tell him, this is what I'd like for you all to consider and then bring it back to us.
I'd like to get, before we send it back to planning board, I got a couple of questions.
And also, before we do, I might be able to.
That's what, I was going to ask Chief, what's your take on this?
So I'm in concurrence with the belief that the best ban it tones are ones that I've ever Overwatch 24 hours a day. Because that Overwatch person acts as the HLA coordinator indirectly. And it really, it creates an environment and atmosphere of, hey, this is, this is the rule of the max. I know that some parks like this, you talk about trades and people that are working, some parks will designate X amount of space for long-term stays, which separates them from the normal fare for a week or two or even a few days. That creates a separation, which allows a little bit more freedom than the expectations of both people utilizing the park. I would be very cautious against the mixed use of an RV park and a mobile home park. Strongly, I wouldn't support that. Only because of the, of the transition and the placement of this current location. Would create a lot of transit past permanent residents. And I think we should really seriously look at that as a board. We should seriously look at that.
Don't let Dan call me. But I think that'll be.
Given that we have two department heads, Jack here is obviously the department head, but we have two other department heads that have serious reservations. And given that we rely on Jack for a lot of things, I would be a little opposed to putting this back on his plate to research it. Seems to me that researching covenants restrictions that may be filed on the monitor site with registered deeds and researching is allowed in other other towns, I would put that back on the app. Because we have three department heads, two that have serious reservations. So I, I would not be for sending it back to Jack to spend his time on it when we need him on other things. That's just my, my opinion.
Also reject it, you know? I mean, that is a possibility. I'm not suggesting it, but just provide the board, is one of the three motions you could make this to reject.
Jack, if it were rejected, I mean, usually there's, in the, in the packet, there's some highlights, some bolded and non-bolded reasons. I don't see any non-bolded reasons.
Before you go there, I think one of the things that, that, just for the, you know, the balance of, of working with the planning board. When the planning board recommends something and we reject it, I think that that doesn't always, doesn't always set a great precedent. I would like them to, you know, to maybe adjudicate it at that level before it even gets to us. So, and so if they're, if they're going to look at it, I think they ought to take our recommendations or our reservations into account. And whether they, whether they determine, you know, this probably isn't a good idea, and then we need to, you know, recommend against it.
I agree. I would throw in a couple of thoughts. You know, we've done this typically when we've had some need to make some amendments to what was presented. Key department carrying up and schedule it to be revisited. I'm glad to go to work. Got a lot of answers, I think, to some of the things that hurt already. And I'll continue to help push on if, if there's an appetite to create this ordinance. And I always say that because I'd say over the years, I've had a number of people come to me and ask. So this is not the first time this has come about, so now we got two others to talk about. So I think the idea is out there and if the board thinks there's an appetite for it, I'm glad to work and see what we can put together, the things, the bones that we all feel comfortable with. And I agree with the revisions that have been made this evening, because those were presented at planning board level for their consideration. They chose those. I think they've probably exhausted this. I'll be honest with you, I didn't look at it three times and they were telling me, why would we look at it three times? So I'm willing to do that on behalf of the board and the town to continue to work on it if you so choose.
I got another query. So, you know, Chip brought some good, the one down the monitors for folks who are working for Duke and they're in there. So just based on your knowledge of the area in and around the mega site, could there be a place over near there that would be appropriate for something like this?
But if it gets located in a proper location and they do have that access to water and sewer, which was one of the caveats here, and it doesn't have to be. It doesn't have to mandatory, make water and sewer mandatory, because if you do, you're asking for it to be in city limits. Bottom line, I think, I think that's pretty clear. If we're not, we probably need to get away from that requirement. Just so that they make sure they meet whatever local, state, county regulations are for having public water and sewer. And a lot of community, we were, like I said, that's the only community I found. No community required water and sewer for the RV site, so we were going with it. And that forced it inside the city.
We could take that out, though.
Yeah.
Well, another thing too, is these RV sites, you go, you can get water, but a lot have dump stations or they'll have their own set system.
There's an approved way to put that in.
Yes.
By my county and state standards.
There is. And just, just for my, Ed is worried, I think you got some information to go back.
I do.
But Ed is worried right now, I don't think that it's something that probably in, I wouldn't necessarily, I don't think it's the right fit for the town of South City, Ed is, Ed is written right now. I do know that, you know, there's a, there's a, outside of where we live, there's a big movement. People in summer houses and RVs and they drive all over the country, but they're staying, you know, RV, like camper. Yeah, that type of thing. And a lot of people were, because there's some nice ones out there. I mean, you know, there's people spend a couple hundred thousand dollars on these things. Yeah, yeah. So I do see that there is, but I don't think that the language that we currently have is what we need here or we need to address. Like is, is that a reasonable statement?
Yeah, I just, they don't have a lot of reservations with it like this. Water, sewage, no one there. A lot of poses something like what Chip described where if it's a workforce that needs to be near the plant where they're working, that's a bit different. And I could probably see something happen, hopefully, hopefully, I'll pull some wind and get some of the mega site and something like this is needed out there. The way it's written.
Yeah, town's invested in the advertisement, recessed into a day that we're all comfortable in bringing it back during the holidays. So we give you a little more time and the not would be my recommendation.
After, after Christmas.
Yes, and like Bill said, let it go back, like what we just did, let it go back to what they come up with. Yeah, because I agree with your statement you had, that you were exactly correct.
I've got January 3rd and January 18th are the new year. It'd be 18, I would be a customer. And it's a Tuesday.
Jack, I got another request since you're looking at this. And you're going to have to educate me a little bit, Chris, maybe you too, but I know we've had some issues with water and moratoriums on buildings. And we've already approved a complex over, you know, hospital. So is there any interplay here that would somehow affect that or be negative towards that?
No, we're currently not under moratorium, so we, we can issue those. I hadn't been, I hadn't issued a lot of, that, request them because, just because the plants are kind of maxed out. And I would like that to wait until, we have space there, but I would like to wait until our two upgrades are done to give us a little more freedom.
Have we had to turn anything down when? Because of the water and sewer issues?
Yes.
What have we had to turn down?
So, Sue Tones is building out there, Hextones, we've turned down a little bit over there. They wanted to add 18 more, so we turned them down. We have, we, we delayed a couple of them. Hextone Road, they were adding 44, I think it was, and we did delay them.
Any other buildings besides Sue Tones that's approached you about a development we've had to turn down?
One on West Third, I don't know if it's that far along yet, but we have talked with them and asked them to hold on.
What did they, what did they want to put out on West?
Two hundred homes or something like that.
Regular homes or mobile homes?
Two regular homes, I think.
Regular homes.
Well, you're on that, so the developer out on Campus Drive or whatever. Yeah, did we get that straightened out or is that where? There were some of you who rather have this one service or sewer, maybe have to have four.
They're going to have one.
We got that nailed down, was that?
Yes, sir.
Then it turned out to be a problem for the builder, because he's worked with it, so.
Yes, sir, we got that.
We got that nailed back.
Which one was that one?
Catwalk Drive.
Wallet. And it's name of the apartment.
That, that 200 homes, where was that?
On Third, West Third.
Old Hospital.
Okay. Okay, that's where this huge area has been cleared, right?
No, 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 that's. It's on North Side, the Third, just past the city and the boundary.
Just past Brookside.
That gets, that gets my mind thinking on something, I mean, because it, getting back to the increase in adverb law tax is one way to me, those are our sales. That's how we make money to fund the rec department, fund people to work in water and sewer plant, fund improvements. The, the RV park kind of thing is going to increase that, but 200 homes would have, but we had to turn it down because we have concerns with the declining water and sewer. So if we're going to, I mean, if we look at our mission statement about balanced governance, we have to take, I think we've got to take that into account when we're looking at stuff like this. We're turning, we're turning down stuff because we're concerned about how much capacity we have. And hopefully, land the mega site, there's a capacity issue there. I just think we got to take it slow on this. Look at our capacity issue, look at what we're potentially losing out on in the future.
Well, if you look on page 70, you may have two options, but of course we have to close top here and approve, basically, discussing it. But the second option is to approve, reject, including me and. But the second option is to approve, reject, and approve again. So you could, like, um, Williams said, reject it one night. If they could possibly bring it back in the future.
And staff recommendation, if there's a half pot to consider, it's be the recessed to, to January eighteenth, February, whatever you're comfortable with.
I, I'm okay with recessing, but I'd like for all of our department heads to kind of weigh in on this because it seems like we got, we got multiple department heads with multiple issues. And I've wanted my, well, my department head is telling me, hey, I've got an issue with this.
So if we want to bring it back in January, what's the procedure?
Pick the date and the location and your time.
I would say.
Motion to recess this year to.
And then that's all.
Something that.
January eighteenth, is that what you suggest?
That's what came with, come word, I mean, January, February, whatever you think.
Yeah, it's like I said earlier.
There's enough time for you to get.
Yeah.
Or when you perform February.
I, I say this kind of February.
February, okay. Maybe the end of February, just make sure.
The second day.
First, the first one down on the holiday.
So I would need a, an emotion, a motion, um, we come back and look at the issue again after we're to twenty-first, the second week.
I'll make a motion that we recess the public hearing until February twenty-first, six thirty, and then I'll be. Hey.
All in favor? Any opposed?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, next is the old business. And talking about the advisory committee, the immigrant advisory committee. And I'll turn it over.
Thank you, Mayor Bertin. Commissioners, tonight, if we will look on page ninety-four, uh, for general packets, there is a memo that lists, uh, it has a list of eleven applicants that submitted a letter of interest to be appointed to the immigrant advisory committee. Uh, the members, there were seven members that were established for this committee originally in the resolution that was adopted back in June. For this meeting tonight, if the board decides to appoint the seven members, uh, the organizational meeting, the first organizational meeting will be held on Tuesday, November the thirtieth, uh, which at that point in time, a chair and vice chair uh, will be appointed by the committee members, as well as the meeting dates and times will be established and the terms of the ones that are appointed to the committee. So what I intend to do now is to turn it over to the board for discussion and/or questions concerning the applicants and the appointment.
Staff, any recommendations on the applicants?
Well, looking at, um, looking at this from a community-based perspective, there are seven that do fit the criteria in the scope and guidelines of, of what the resolution established for these members. And those are the seven that have a Southern City address and live within the community.
So that would be staff recommendations of Southern City.
They, they do all meet.
They do.
The qualifications.
And we are all.
Yeah.
Yes.
And.
Is everybody good with that?
I'm good.
I'm good.
Would you need a motion or just a consensus? Well.
No, there, there needs to be a motion to appoint each one, and they do need to be named.
Can they be named in the same motion?
Yes, they can be named in the same motion, but they do need to be named individually.
But we don't have to give their addresses?
I would do that. Just to, to make it a part of the record. Yes, sir.
I'll make a motion that we appoint following individuals to the immigrant advisor committee for the town of South City in no particular order. Hannah Bonitas at one-two-seven B East Raleigh Street in Southern City. Nora Hernandez at two-zero-six Eden Hills Road in Southern City. Norma DeCiel Pedroomo at one-four-one Willie Duncan Road in Southern City. Victoria Navarro at seven-three-zero East Cardinal Street in Southern City. Carlos Simpson at eight-one-five Murphy Avenue in Southern City. Anubio Vasquez Rodriguez at three-zero-eight East Second Street in Southern City. And Shirley Viaturo at eight-zero-nine Tenwood Drive in Southern City.
All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, moving on. Roy, make your business. Your mind. Department of Thoughts.
Just what was submitted.
Okay. Manager.
Yeah, so tonight I wanted to bring to the board's attention that uh, we did hold a local job fair on November the fourth at Paul Braxton Gym. Uh, we had twenty-plus local residents to come out and inquire into the positions that we had opened. So from that job fair, we did hire or make conditional offers to the following. We, we were able to hire one full-time planner, one full-time telecommunicator in the police department, and then two part-time license plate agency representatives. So we were able to hire four people out of the twenty within that three-hour timeframe. So we really count that as a success, especially for, uh, the local individuals. And we're looking forward to having them on board. And certainly in the future, we'll look at holding these again when we have potential jobs. An update on history, we are supposed to find out Thursday what the delivery date is. So we are still pushing forward with that, uh, working with the engineers, uh, and the contractor to get this job moving forward so we can get that back open as soon as possible. We did hold the fireworks display this last Saturday evening. I think it was a success.
A lot of people said it was. People commented, maybe I'm missing it.
Yes, exactly.
I, I had, yeah, I had people asking, why can't you do this on July fourth?
So, um, I, I certainly think it's a precedent, uh, to, uh, future displays for whatever event. But again, uh, we were glad to have been a part of the closeout of the, uh, Chatham two-fifty celebration. And I do want to thank all the staff for their participation. There was a lot of work put into it by the departments. So I want to acknowledge that and thank them. There's a picture displayed on the screen that was taken by one of our staff members. So.
That needs to make it on the website, right there.
Yeah.
The, uh, the next item is a reminder that this coming Thursday, uh, we will be providing the Thanksgiving meal. And it will be boxed lunches. Uh, and for those employees that responded, uh, we did put out an email and asked that everyone respond. And those that were included in the account will have those available at lunch.
What time?
What time is lunch?
Uh, it will be around twelve o'clock. Those meals will be available.
No problem.
Well, they'll just be delivered at, at town hall.
Oh, well, I mean, from four to twelve to.
Whatever time.
Thursday.
On Thursday, the eighteenth.
Twelve o'clock, town hall.
That's right. And also, uh, one additional reminder, there will only be one meeting that will be held in December, and that will be on the sixth. And that's all I have.
Yes, too.
I understand we're going to have a Christmas parade this year?
Yes, sir, that, that's right.
Are we going to ride?
In the back of the truck, in the back of the truck on hydrogen.
Yeah, that's what you said we're going to do.
That's a tradition.
Yes, on Thursday.
Yeah, okay.
Bring the ladder.
That's the back, right? I don't follow that back.
This room, they had to help me in an hour. This time I got cold in the business. William, do you have anything to add for now? Anybody but Louis have anything else to add?
I was going to add some.
Well, okay, you have thirty seconds.
So, uh, have we looked into Chief's idea of the cadet program anymore? I just got that idea in my head because the job fair went so well. He talked about, uh, looking into that cadet program that he had to tell the people to the table.
He has, he has provided me with some information and I'm currently reviewing that and looking at it and then staff will evaluate it and see where it goes from there. I, I haven't approached the attorney group yet. But we'll get into that part of it.
We can use that for multiple departments.
Thirty seconds, sir. All right, I need a motion going into closed session.
If we make a motion, we don't have to go.
We have to go.
Or make a motion when we close record session, going, uh, uh, yeah, close it. As per one forty-three dash three, one eight dash, uh, dot eleven eleven, a closed session, consult with an attorney and board retained by the public body or to preserve, uh, to preserve the attorney-client privilege between attorney and public body, which privilege is hereby not.
Second.
I can't even talk at this time. Well, all right, everyone, thank you.
Only got two minutes to post track, like it's a big ball.[285.12]